Let anybody in.
I'm the waiting.
Oh. Oh shoot, they have to join audio.
Uh, Millersburg City Council, March eighth at six thirty P M. Call the meeting to order. In terms of attendees, we are missing one from our existing council members being Dave and I hope he joins us shortly. We are, we have one open position, of course, which is not here represented. And uh, don't think Kim's here, so our staff is here.
About my mic. Didn't see my mic.
Mayor. It's David joining in.
Here, okay, awesome. Okay, so we, we are in full attendance. Okay. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If not, hearing none, uh, we have three items on the consent agenda. Approval of the February eighth council meeting, the February twenty second work session in our city accounts table report. Are there any items you'd like to pull from the agenda? If not, we'll entertain it. And a motion to accept or approve the consent agenda, please.
I move to accept the consent agenda as stated.
Second that.
Second, Scott, thank you. Let's go ahead and vote that if you will please using the icons below. Yes or no? We got before, we have, um, we have a pass motion. Lieutenant Miller is on with us, so. Well, Beth.
Hey, can you hear me?
Ready for your report.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, I wasn't sure if my audio was working. Okay, so yeah, for uh, the month of February in Millersburg, there was, um, as you guys can tell from the report, the four traffic citations and fourteen warnings. There were four crashes, two adults arrested, we, um, documented a hundred and seventy-two complaints or incidences investigated. Um, a lot of that obviously you can tell from the pages or the extra patrols, um, and some speed or traffic enforcement that is extra from some of the deputies. Millersburg had a hundred and eighty point two-five hours out of the hundred and fifty-three contracted hours for the month of February. Um, except that's not what's on there, seven hundred and, oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at a hundred and seventy-two, wow, it's been a day for me, I'm sorry. Um, so that's that from the report. Um, I will say that there was a really big uptake in, um, thefts and, um, some burglaries of residential and shops broken into, the businesses getting hit. Um, we are going to see fuel probably, uh, being stolen. Um, they've already made some attempts at Pacific Pride. Um, getting into some of their underground tanks and whatnot. Um, the deputies are fully aware. And we've put out emails for, you know, especially night shift to, um, attempt all that they can for uh, being present out there. Um, you know, trying to hide in darker spots that we might be able to catch some people. Um, there are some of these thieves, I guess you could say, uh, that are on our radar. Um, it's just connecting them to the actual criminal activities, so there is some video of people um, like a subject that broke in over at Frightliner, um, some of the residential stuff. Um, with some tools taken out of the cargo trailer. Uh, there is video of a vehicle and turns out that vehicle and subject in that vehicle was arrested attempting to steal some things out of vans in the city of Albany. So we're pretty certain that's the same person, it's just now locating him because he was cited and released right away. Um, it's just kind of building that and giving those people, you know, hopefully behind bars and off the streets for a little bit to, uh, quit committing these thieves thefts. But, uh, all around the county, um, when doing these reports this month, I noticed, um, significant activity picking up. So I, you know, that the deputies are interested in making an effort to combat that when their time allows in the evening times and right now with winter, we have a little bit more time in the evening. Um, other than that, just updates for the sheriff's office, you know, we're hiring nine onboard right now with patrol that have either already started or are in the, um, have a high business hasn't come yet. Um, so that's exciting, it's just gonna take a while to get them all trained. And actually, you know, a solo on the road, um, we are losing some deputies to O S P and unfortunately, they are all in contract cities. Um, so Captain Fountain sent out today an email. Um, hoping for some volunteers to fulfill that, fulfill those needs, otherwise they will, uh, from seniority. Based on seniority, people will get assigned to fulfill those contracts. For the time being until we can get deputies out of field training and on their own. Um, and we have a lot more waiting to be, uh, through the background process, it's just, you know, we're hiring for lots of positions throughout the sheriff's offices, so we have to give the jail a turn and the dispatchers a turn to get hired on, so. Um, other than that, that's kind of a little update in a nutshell and report. Does anybody have any specific questions or anything?
A couple positive comments, Beth. One, appreciated the response of deputies over the concern we had sent to City Hall regarding speeding by the bus stop not too far from your house down on Concert. I appreciate the follow-up on that, even though the results were quite normal, at least, you know.
Yeah.
We took a look at it and, yeah, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, yeah. I talked to the deputy, uh, about that actually just the other day, so we had a good conversation and and all that too about that, so I'll make sure he knows the word from you guys too.
Also appreciate the middle-of-the-night checks of the park.
Yes, yeah.
See that we're doing that, appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely, I'll bring that back. I did notice there had been some people that had been you know, sleeping in cars and just kind of out, a little bit more uptick out there of people roaming around, so.
I don't know how to twice bring this up, but you, I, I sense that we are probably this is our, our problem, not yours, I mean, we probably could benefit some, some crime prevention discussions throughout the community. Uh, in the past, we've had a hard time necessarily getting enough people to really do it, and I'm not sure where we are as a community currently. But we're so many new people, I now think about how I might get a discussion going amongst the population, see if there's interest in doing something like that.
Yeah, um, you know, I think that when I see these upticks and thefts and stuff, I always I try to remind, you know, and starting with the cities, if you guys send out newsletters or, you know, mailers of any sort of just reminding, um, people to lock up vehicles, lock up houses and doors, um. I, you know, I mentioned that in another city council meeting and I, it kind of got backfired on me in a, in a sense of uh, victim shaming, but I don't pre, I don't we can do our part in trying to prevent these, um, unlocked vehicles getting rammed through and, um, you know, the one residential burg, the side door was unlocked to a garage, and that's very unfortunate. And I'm not saying, you know, we shouldn't go about being able to forget to lock things up, but it does make things easier for these people to get in. With that said, I am noticing more forced into houses, vehicles, trailers, so even in locked circumstances, um, people are finding ways in right now. So, um, but you know, if there is on websites, um, the sheriff's office definitely on our social media, um, throughout the year and mostly around the holidays will remind people of that, but um, it might be a good time since it is, uh, more prevalent, I believe, in the last month or two and currently, so February and March, uh, starting off the same. Um, that we push it out on our social media as well as reminders of people. Um, you know, I have neighbors that call me to say there's a suspicious car they saw, you know, driving around the neighborhood and you know, so neighbors being aware and looking out for each other, um, you know. Cameras are doing well with, um, identifying vehicles and potential people. Um, you know, I think in large part, a lot of people are doing their part, but, um, you know, other than a community that is just watching out for each other and us getting the word out on our social media and maybe you guys as a city, through the community, um, sending reminders, mailers, you know, around, um, certain times of the year or something.
We are working to rely upon our webpage for resources affecting communication. Kevin, can we maybe dedicate a space for crime prevention? And then maybe can we also maybe link to some brochures that Sheriff's Office might have available to us? But that's is that help? Kevin, did you hear me? I don't think Kevin heard me. I'll put it on my list of things to do to discuss with Kevin.
I, I heard you, I was trying to take a look, we should be able to, yes.
Okay.
But we would have to switch it out probably. I believe, I, because I know we have a link currently to the fire and I believe we have we have a link right now to the sheriff's office on there, so anything, someone clicks on that, they can get to that as well.
Excuse me a sec, can I ask people to please shut off their microphones if they're not speaking, we're getting background noise? That was fast, thank you, okay. Okay, anything else for Lieutenant Miller?
Um, can I just say one more thing, maybe, just as an idea? Um, so as a council, you might think about this, that when you, when we, I think it would be that more beneficial, obviously, when we're back in person meeting with you guys. But, um, if there's in any interest in having, um, like one of our K nine handlers come and you know, do a quick presentation of our monthly report, but then also have like a question and answer session with his special well, we have two of them right now, special assignments, um, it went really well, um, it was really well received in Brownsville a few months ago. Um, and you know, we just have some other special assignments that, um, it might be just kind of different than hearing me or Steve or, you know, one of us talk every month, um, and just a different perspective of different things that our office has to offer. Um, you know, we have our timber and marine patrol deputies, but, you know, Millersburg isn't really an area bordering timber or any waterways, but, um, they could give some tips heading into summer or anything like that, so just a thought, maybe moving forward once in a while to have a change of, change up.
Oh, we do technically border the Willamette, but I think in county.
Yes.
Well, we have a lot of voters though in the community.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so just food for thought to think about, maybe one time here coming up, we'll invite one and when you guys go back to in-person and you know, see how that goes over.
Hopefully, we're gonna do that next month.
Great.
I would really encourage you and Kevin to discuss that, I think it would be well received.
Good, yeah, okay. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Hey Beth, I have one thing, and I, I was on it last month and this is Counselor Sullivan, you know, we have a habitual Jake break problem out here
Yes.
in the community, and, uh, he, uh, seems to think he needs to do it at four in the morning on Old Salem and, and it, uh, it's getting pretty, uh, you know, hard to take for the people that back up to Old Salem. So if we could watch that real close, that would, that would be nice.
Yes, I'll, I'll keep that up there on the, um, I did ask for that to be added to our focus patrol after last month's meeting. Um, and I'll go ahead and send it out to the teams and, um, the supervisors individually to pass on that information. Um, sometimes coming down from their supervisors and not just like a mass email comes, comes through a little bit, uh, better and sterner for this is a problem, but let's try to take some enforcement on that.
Awesome, I appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Take care, all right. Moving on, we will now move into public comment, this is an opportunity for those in the public to ask this question, give us input, feedback or whatever. So I see a number of you are on there who'd like to speak to us. If you can find a raised hand at the bottom, go ahead and raise it, otherwise just start talking. Last call for public input, there will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Hearing none, then we're gonna move forward to a public hearing for the comprehensive plan update, this is for an ordinance amending the Millersburg copper comp plan, uh, Matt. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time, followed by, uh, staff input on text of this, of this here, uh, ordinance. Followed by public comments and feedback, followed by information sharing with from staff or in between staff and council. And I will close the hearing after that and we'll go into an opportunity to vote, to vote on it. So Matt, you want to give us your review from the public, uh, on, uh, the content of the proposal?
You bet, I'm happy to, you bet. So before we dive into this, uh, Matt Street presenting for staff this evening. And before we dive into the proposal or the project, I want to actually walk through a little bit of background on this. Last year, we had an all-new development code that was adopted, and with that, we adopted an all-new comprehensive plan map. So let's walk through exactly what that means, uh, especially in case you're folks on the, on the, uh, phone that might not be as familiar with it. A comprehensive plan is the leading document for a city. The comp plan represents the master plan as far as land uses are concerned. The zoning map is actually subservient to the comprehensive plan map. The zoning map actually implements the comp plan map. And we're trying to show that relationship visually here on the screen by putting the comprehensive plan on top because it's the leading document. This slide shows a table, uh, nine point five zero B out of our comp plan. And with this table, you can see that several different zones can be consistent with the same comprehensive plan land use designation at the same time. For example, where we have a comp plan designation that's simple, like the one that's highlighted on the screen, residential. The zone, you know, you can, you can actually have different residential zones that implement that comprehensive plan land use designation. It should also be noted that some zones are in more than one comprehensive plan land use designation, so they can be consistent with more than one at the same time, we see that here on the screen with the rural zone. So before we go too much further, we should also highlight the purpose of an urban growth boundary. Uh, the Oregon land use system is set up, uh, at the state level to protect farmland by putting an invisible wall around cities to keep them from, uh, continual expansion. Cities can't just grow their urban growth boundary whenever they want, they have to keep urban uses inside the urban growth boundary. And likewise, uh, the rural areas on the outside are, uh, designed to protect farmlands on the outside. The farms that happen to be inside city limits are therefore intended to be temporary in their very nature, can be either long-term or short-term, but intended to be temporary. The entire land use system that we have is designed to ensure that farms, uh, do not remain long-term within city limits. So let's turn now to the actual proposed project, the city is proposing to change the, uh, comprehensive plan land use designation on three properties west of Woods Road, each has different ownership and together they total about a hundred and fifty acres. The proposal calls for changing the current comprehensive plan land use designation of agricultural to residential for all three. The zoning on the properties, all three of them, are currently rural, and we are not proposing to change that zoning at this time. Now that's important because the, uh, zone indicates what the, uh, landowners can and can't do on the property. We're not proposing to change that because right now the rural designation is consistent with the existing agricultural comp plan designation inconsistent with the, uh, residential comp plan designation that we're proposing at this time. The proposed change is actually going to add more flexibility for the existing property owners. So let's say for example that we don't change the comprehensive plan designation right now. And if the owner decides they want to change zoning from rural to, uh, residential low, they actually can't do that because residential low isn't allowed in their existing, uh, comprehensive plan land use designation of agriculture. However, if we change the property to the residential comp plan designation, they can switch the zone from rural to residential low because those are both allowed in the residential comp plan designation. Sorry, my computer is being sticky. So why is the city doing this change now? Uh, just to make everybody fully aware, nobody is proposing any development on any one of these three parcels, that is not on the table right now, the, uh, property owners have not indicated that they want to develop that property. But there are a host of reasons why we want to do it now, and some of those include the fact that we just recently completed our housing needs analysis. And that did mention that we have a seven point seven percent growth rate, and so we might need more land to develop sometime in the distant future. And the state is also changing their rules regarding how we're supposed to change comprehensive plan land use designations, and it's about to get a whole lot more difficult. And so we thought we would try to get this done while it was still a little bit easier to get done. Now, just for the record, this is actually reverting back to the comp plan designation that we had before. We used to have a one-map system, meaning the zoning and the comp plan were together in one map, and this was rural then. We're really just changing it back to what it was before we did the comp plan switch up a year and a half ago. All of these, uh, requirements meet the criteria from our code. They meet all the state requirement, and that's outlined in great detail in our staff report. The D L C D was sent a thirty-five day notice consistent with state law requirements. And the planning commission has recommended approval of this project. So with that, staff recommends approval, the planning commission recommends approval, and a sample motion is on the screen for the council. This concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Matt, I think before we go to just simple questions, I'd like to provide the opportunity for uh, public members to ask questions, speak up, provide any opinions. Any comments, questions, or concerns from public at all?
Say, if anyone's having trouble unmuting, they could raise their hand or indicate somehow that they need a little help there.
Or everybody out there is muted, so.
Can't raise their hand, if they, if they can't see how to raise their hand, if they hit the participants at the bottom, that should bring up a list of participants and the raised hand is at the bottom of that. We give them, show them that option as well.
Welcome to unmute your microphone and just speak to us as well, I see all microphones are, are off.
Shelley Wright is unmuted, so I'm not sure if she is wanting to talk to me.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
I was just curious, I don't know if you can hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was just curious that, um, if the land should get developed, um, as far as residential in the future. Um, does that mean, you know, would Woods Road be able to kind of handle all of the new traffic that that would bring in?
I'm gonna let staff have a question, we're, we're currently working on a staff, uh, Janelle or Matt, or do you want to address the question, please?
I can, I can address that question. Woods Road, um, as, as development occurs, Woods Road will continue to be built out to a full, um, wider street section like we have in Alexander and Millersburg Drive. Um, as I think many people are aware, because we've talked about it in prayer, uh, meetings, we are working on a multi-use path along Woods Road. So I guess the short answer is yes, it will, um, that upgrades will be needed along with development.
And I would just also add that our long-term plan is our industrial property south of Concert develops, we, the new road that is coming by the fire station is intended to ultimately connect down into Woods. The exit of that currently works on Old Salem, the long-term plan is if the state puts in the new interchange, that would tie in, so that would tie in also to to Woods and provide access then potentially through our industrial property into two I five, if and when that interchange is built.
I don't think that would, that wouldn't draw, drive more traffic up to Woods heading north, that wouldn't already be there for the residential, but it would help traffic move out of that area more, hopefully.
Answered your question, uh, if not, you're welcome to come back. And again, there's room to
Yes, I believe so, it was very hard to hear you guys, but thank you.
Thank you, okay. Any further comments or questions? We'll now move to questions of Matt from council. Hearing none, I'm assuming that we are finished with any questions or concerns, so I'm going to close the hearing. And now move to the question of the motion in front of you, which Matt has on the screen, if you are in agreement with what planning commission has agreed to, what Matt is proposing to the council. I would need a motion to approve, uh, this ordinance as provided on your screen, please.
I motion based on the findings of fact that the proposed amendment satisfies the applicable criteria and that the city council approve application DC twenty-one dash zero three and adopt ordinance number one nine four dash twenty-two.
Second.
Have a second. Scott, I see your picture, can you give me a second, please?
Second from Calvin.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, please go ahead and vote using the icons, yes or no? And we have a motion carried, thank you so much, good work, Matt, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
All right, moving on to council member and staff comments. Any council member have anything they'd like us to talk about or bring up? I will talk about the event committee that met last week. Uh, we meet the first week of each month. Uh, thus far, there's been five thousand dollars received in sponsorships with a fair amount of commitments out there yet to be received. We've kind of tongue-in-cheeked them, we've already got eight cars signed up for the car show, which is in September. And that's getting a lot of press. Uh, we're look, working, the committee is working on selection of local, very popular, very local bands as opposed to going out to national, you know, big name folks. The consensus of the group is I'd rather focus on local entertainment for a number of reasons, including cost, but also people are well-known and probably get actually better attendance as a result, so that's in the works. A little later in the agenda, we're going to approve, I hope approve, uh, two new members of the committee, and as a result of that, we're going to see a lot more media coverage and support from the, uh, as a result of that, so we're looking forward to that. Committee is working very well right now, so stay tuned. Questions on that regarding the event committee, anybody? If not, are there any other council member or staff comments? If not, then we'll move into city managers' report.
Hey, I'm gonna ask Janelle to start off with the fire station update, project update.
All right, so work over the last couple of weeks, there's been a lot of work inside the building going on with, um, painting, the jit board, texturing, painting, um, electrical gears being installed in the electrical room. Exterior sheetrock at the patio, siding installation continues, um, concrete curbs and gutters, if, if you drove by on Monday, actually, you saw concrete curbs going in if you were looking, um, on the new looking on the new street. Sight lighting bases are being constructed. Colors at utility court, irrigation sleeves in the ground. Then the upcoming work over the next few weeks, painting interior walls, actually some of that is already done, installing door frames inside grid ceilings, tiling in the restroom starts this week. Sheet rock in the apparatus bay and exercise room, plywood in the bays. Tea room, we had an A/Tea Room coordination meeting this afternoon. Bunch of other stuff is going on. I won't read all of it necessarily, but are there any questions on what's going on right now on the station? All right, no change in the schedule from the last update. Our completion date is the end of June and in the next item, we'll talk about ribbon cutting dates, so I'll save that. And then our financial update, I don't, I'm not sure if this is a change since last council meeting. We just got another invoice that was paid, but it was before the pack, or after the pack it went out. So you'll see that next month. And that is it on the project report.
So the next thing that we do want to have a discussion with you about is we had some discussion if there was any interest in a naming of the, the conference room. It sounds like from the input we've received to this point, there wasn't, but we just wanted to double check on that with you. And then we are also looking at a proposed ribbon cutting ceremony and open house for the fire station on July 30th. So we wanted to check with, with you to see what council's availability is for that day. That's a Saturday. The intent would be that we would have that ribbon cutting and then probably Saturday and Sunday would be open. They would do an open house for the public to come in and we're talking about possibly maybe a Tuesday or Wednesday evening that same week for those that couldn't make it on Saturday or Sunday, but allowing the public to come through and, and wear the station and meeting the crews that's assigned there. But we don't need an answer right tonight, but if you know, or if you can check and get back to us if the 30th would, would work, that would be appreciated. Then we will probably talk with you more about others that we may want to, to invite.
On the conference room name, I'll just say if we don't assign a name, which is fine, it can just simply say conference room or Station 15 Conference Room. And at this, as Kevin said, at this point, that's, that's the feedback we've heard is just keep it simple that way, but we just want to confirm because we're ordering the final submittal unsigned is just going in. So if we want to put a different name on there, now would be a good time to do that.
There's been a fair amount of discussion between myself and staff and someone Scott Callan as well over the last month that the rest of council hasn't heard. I kind of started this process or this concern or desire to do something. To be quite frank, I started out just naming the fire station when I realized that's not really appropriate. So I'm hoping this name, the conference room, and now we're questioning whether that's appropriate or not, and I, I support that. What I really wanted to do, I think we want to do is, is really recognize Scott Callan and Kevin for the work that has gone into this over many, many years to provide this for the people of Millersburg. Then I got talking to Kim, I'm sorry, Janelle about the name needs to be simple because we're, that name will be used as people reserve the conference room. That'd be done tested by Albany Fire. Not sure, but it needs to be something simple that's easy to reference that room as a empty squat room, so it's simple and easy. Whether or not that's a particular person, I'm neutral. Okay, we're talking two people in this case. So I think the way Janelle and I left it was, you know, let's propose we just have well, a name, which we haven't decided yet, but at least have a plaque recognizing Scott and Kevin. So, you know, something that, that John said last minute, which really rung a bell a couple of us, you know, this is a room built for the people, by the people. This is a station built for the people, by the people. Those words in some, second, are kind of mentioned on the plaque, you'll see later. So I'm kind of rambling on too much here, but that's how we got here and I welcome any feedback, as does Janelle, on where do you want to go from here with this? Okay.
So I guess it's mayor, everyone did receive the language that's going to go on the plaque, I believe. Did everyone get a chance to look at that, council?
This is Callan, I, I thought and I, I responded, I thought the, the plaque read good and appreciate that, the comment. And then, you know, back to the, the conference room, you know, it seemed like consensus was just to like keep it simple. So, you know, my recommendation was just to go with Station 15 Conference Room. And, and then that's, it's pretty clear where, where it is. So that was my recommendation.
I support that also. John or Dave, you got any input or thoughts on this besides what was said?
I agree with what was said. Pretty neutral.
I, I like.
Okay. All right, Janelle, you got your answer.
All right, thank you. We will move forward with that. Do you like me to go on with the project updates?
Yeah, this is, just go through your list.
All right. So just a quick update on the water leak corrosion issue concern that I brought up a few months ago, actually back in November, there was a leak on Safeway Court due to corrosion of the ductile iron pipe. After Albany looked at it, consulted with construction, or corrosion specialist, we all decided that we're not going to dig up any pipes, try to look at them because that's going to be very disruptive and be expensive when we dig up our streets. But instead, we're going to perform leak detection, which Albany has the equipment to do and they've done for several times here, they've do it a lot in Albany as well. So they did, in February, they did the first round of it, the, that entire neighborhood area, which is the oldest in the city as far as infrastructure goes. And, you know, no leaks, no issues anywhere. Well, we will continue to do that quarterly in that same area and we'll probably expand that a little bit just to get a better sense of what's going on in a, in a larger area. But at this point, we're going to just keep an eye on it. And then the permanent pavement patch will be scheduled for this spring and summer. We'll keep that patch maintained for the time being. At the same time, we schedule another patch on Alexander that needs to be done. So that's the update on that item. The Old Salem Waterline abandonment project, just another quick update on that. We are working toward construction this summer, hopefully. It will require quite a bit of coordination with industries and ODOT. So we are going to be abandoning, abandoning about 50, 100 feet of old cement pipe and Old Salem Road and total in two projects. The first project is the one we would like to do this summer and it covers from about Truax Creek to the south end of the intermodal site. So moving forward, we'll be reaching out to our, the three industries that are affected by this in the next couple of weeks. And then the Wood Road multi-use path, I don't have much of an update here other than just to tell you it's moving forward. We're in the cross-sections and right-of-way impacts, determining survey limits, and we plan to do survey this spring. And then we do want to begin planning for construction of the sidewalk or path along Becker Ridge and North Oak this coming summer, if we can make that happen. And this will be a temporary path that will connect things up until that road, full street improvement is done sometime in the future. And that should really help things for those residents to be able to get either north or south once the multi-use path is, is constructed safely without getting on Woods Road. Thanks. Oh, that's it for me.
Okay, wanted to give council an update on a meeting we had last week with Loves. Met with a district manager and the regional, and the regional manager that is out of Arizona, Paul Maka onsite, and we reviewed some things that they're planning on doing. They're doing a number of things. They're going to be placing stop signs, lighted stop signs that sounds like that have flashing around the edge of them at their exits. One of the things they shared with us as we were walking the site, they do have a stop bar out from their fueling islands that trucks are supposed to pull to and they do stop there, but he says we recognize, as he, they were looking at that, that they need to do some additional. And we, while we were standing there, you could observe the trucks would pull up to that stop line and they were stopping and then they were pulling on out and if there was traffic, they were continuing. But they'll be putting stop signs at the exit for the service station, the gas station and RVs and one on each side they're talking about on their property with the larger driveway and then also the driveway to the west that provides it. They're also going to be putting in additional signage along the area of, on both sides of the accessway next to the trucks for no parking. And they're also going to be striping the road in that area for, for no parking. They're also going to be coming in, he asked the, the regional manager, asked the district manager to come in and make sure that they have wheel stops reinstalled along those parking spaces that, up to that, because while we were there, we noticed one of the trailers was back to the curb and it broke out. And to make sure that those are maintained so that they don't overhang into that, that driveway. So we looked at with them, you know, we pulled up the map where the property lines are so that they could see the area to make sure that that's, that is marked on it. And went over a number of other things. They also had a discussion with one of the principals of Loves. I forget which one, one of the, I think it was his sons, but one of the, of the Loves family. And we're working through the logistics of it right now, but they're wanting to contribute $23,000 to help alleviate some of the costs that we have incurred for that and then evaluate that on an annual basis on if there's additional things that need to be done. They're hopeful that they can make some impacts and improve things, but they also want to make sure that they're a good community member. And when they saw that the impacts that was having on us and that, so as soon as we work through those deals, they want to get that funding to us to help offset our expenses that have been driven by the calls for service out there. So that is where we are. We're going to continue to follow up and meet with them. And like I said, we want to make an emphasis, more of an emphasis on being a strong community member versus just.
Yeah, thank you.
I thought our meeting went very well and I think it was an excellent response from what they were seeing. Yeah, both the regional and district managers' numbers for contacting them as well if any further issues should, should arise. Any questions on that?
I appreciate you, Janelle, meeting with them and it sounds like they've basically covered the points that we discussed a month before. The $23,000 for a law enforcement support is a big deal. I appreciate that very much and the stop signs. So yeah, I, I'm feeling pretty good about this. The key is, as you suggested, see how it goes over time and reevaluate, but thank you for doing that. Kevin asked for other comments, I butted, anybody else have comments regarding Loves?
This, this Callan, yeah, that's great news. And the only thing I would just comment on is that we, you know, and I don't think we would lose track, but we continue to keep watch of how the calls are going and, and where, where those calls continue to go. Hopefully they go down or they just level off, but yeah, I think it'd be good just to keep, keep an eye on that. And I know we will, so.
They've done some additional training with their staff on things as well. They've added additional security features, some additional security features. One of the things they did share with us that, I think one thing that they'll say it's always shared with us is they've had calls out there in the past for issues with the showers. And one of the things they shared with us, not drivers that have been the problem, it's their facilities, a lot of times it's homeless, not homeless who come in and will use the showers, which, you know, if they have the funds to do it, they're, they're allowing them. But it sounds like they like to take advantage of how long they're there. So I think that's one of the challenges they have ran into. So they're looking at those things and things to limit that, have to address it as well. No other questions with regards to Loves. Next thing I wanted to make you aware of, you may recall a little over a year ago, we talked with council, the state has a program, Business Oregon has a program called RISAS, which is regionally significant industrial sites. Previously, the only sites that were approved were in the Portland region. We were approached by the state and said, hey, is Millersburg interested in our property being a part of it? And since you, what it does is if, if we, once we filled out the application, is any investment that the city makes in infrastructure planning, things to make our site developable roads, that can be reimbursable under a agreement with the state through state income tax that comes from any industry that comes in and meets the criteria for that site. And it's reimbursement of up to $10 million through the whole program yearly. So it kind of depends on where you are. So we filled out a significant application process and one of the things that prompted us to look at what our true costs would be for both the property on the east side of the tracks and as well as the development. So the water and sewer improvements that would be needed and road improvements through those areas and shared that with the state. Put that in, we received, no, it's about a week ago that it's to be going to the state director's for approval, Business Oregon's director for approval of the project. So we expect to see that here probably by our next council meeting. It's based on funds that we put, so funds that we receive from the state or other sources wouldn't be allowed, but any funds that we directly contribute to the development of that would be eligible for reimbursement over time. Any questions on that?
Good work. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
A light half.
Okay. Forrest, as city attorney, do you have anything for us?
Nothing, thank you.
I see no one funny business. Moving to new business, we have some positions to fill. First one is appointing a budget committee member. Kevin, you want to go ahead and, and just talk to us about the applicant? And we need a motion, probably pretty clear to go ahead and do that.
I would just mention, mayor, that we do have one vacancy currently on our budget committee and we have one applicant, Doug Iverson. I think most of the council is probably, Doug's been fairly involved prior to the pandemic and then he's been on a number of times attending council meetings and then since then, I mean, his applications are before you.
Well, Doug, from his participation, as Kevin indicated, would somebody consider making a motion to approve him, to appoint him to the budget committee?
I make a motion that we appoint Doug Iverson to the budget committee.
Okay.
Go ahead and please vote using the icons. Motion carried. Thank you so much. The next one, I'll kick off if I can.
Thanks, Doug. I was just saying, thanks Doug for, for putting in for that.
He is not.
He's not? I didn't think so.
Oh, he's not there. I thought he, I thought he was. Sorry.
That's okay, Scott. Thank you.
He may watch the recording, so.
There you go.
The advance committee is continuing to learn and grow and flex back and forth as we continue to move forward and realize coming out of last year that we need to expand our committee with seeking to bring up people with certain skill sets to, to help us in areas that we need and hope in. So they went out with a process as we did a couple of years ago, asking folks to apply, went through an interview process and, and the selection process. So out of that, we have two appointees for your support, one being Amanda Garcia, who is an employee from the Corvallis Boys and Girls Club and Kim, our own Kim Wollenberg, who has actually sat in a lot of committee meetings in the past as a liaison role with the city now, where she's being invited to come on as a volunteer who will actually work and manage the run process, actually with the help of Ray Park. who will actually work and manage the run process, actually with the help of the great park behind the scene. So unless Kevin or Janelle had other words, I would just like to suggest that we make a motion to appoint both Amanda and Kim to the event committee.
This is Cowan, a motion, we appoint Amanda Garcia and Kim Wollenberg to the events committee.
Here, I'm not sure if you're speaking, we weren't hearing you.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if Jim wanted to call the vote.
Oh, I did. I said, please go ahead and vote using the icons, I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Apparently nobody else did either. I've got three out of the four, so I'm worried I missed somebody.
Counselor Harms.
Dave, are you there?
It shows on my screen that it is.
Oh, that's weird. There you go.
There it is.
We got everybody.
All right. Motion carried. Thanks, Dave. Okay, moving on then, the grant application. I'm assuming, Kevin, do you want to carry that?
Yeah, I'll be taking this one. We've just got another grant that we're going to be chasing after and we're looking for our council to support it. A council-supported resolution is a requirement of this grant. The Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, they host a lot of different grants. This specific one that we're going after, we're looking for a conceptual park design for our newly acquired property up there off of Millersburg Road. And so it's going to include both the concept park design, public outreach, and the entitlement of the park as well. We're looking to go after about $40,000. There is a 20% match on that and that can be in kind, staff time, that kind of stuff as well. And so we're just looking for the council to adopt this resolution so we can have the support.
And I would just mention, it's in the staff report, but I would just point out that this would be budgeted for within our budget for next fiscal year.
Got it. This is Cowan, motion is we adopt resolution 2022-03.
Second.
A second from John. Please go ahead and vote. Motion carried. Thank you so much. Might also mention that Matt is taking on the responsibility of leading the Parks Commission forward. This is a good sign for him. Thank you so much. I believe that's the end of new business. This is opportunity for public closing comment. Any comments, questions, or concerns from the public? Last chance. Hearing none. Any council comments, closing comments?
Here, I have one other thing I would just mention maybe real quickly for council's feedback on. We've had discussion on it previously with regards to the house. Our current house. We have had discussions with Wiley and we had further discussions with them today. And we are asking them, we've had discussion with Forrest, since they are mobilized and stuff, we have asked them to give us a quote, the removal of the house and the barn and a couple of the outstructures, keeping the current shop that is not connected until that. So we have asked them for that price. We had had a couple of inquiries about the property on there. So our thought is with them having the equipment mobilized right there now, that would probably be cheaper. We would get a much better, potentially a better price than we would going out to do a quote for that. We're not hearing the mayor. Now we can.
All right, so we're about to adjourn in less than one hour. Unless somebody's got some emergency out there, we need to do it.
This is Cowan. Yeah, no emergency, but I wanted to make comment regarding one, the house. Is there any opportunity to put that out for a move to someone to purchase and move it versus demolition?
Well, we could. It would take additional time, which may cost half the time. I don't know, when you look at what the cost of moving, just talking with, hearing some people that have tried to move here recently and knowing that there probably isn't an easy spot to move it to in this location unless someone's already aware of something. That might be, that'd be difficult. I mean, but that's what the council wants. Our biggest concern is if we're going to do it, we would need to do it before they immobilize their heavy equipment off the site. If we see any. We can hold it and we can go out for standard RFP.
What's that, what would that look like? Well, first of all, they're there till like roughly mid-June, probably with that equipment?
No, the equipment will be finished there probably in a month or two.
Once they're done with the main site work, the road and the parking areas and all that, I mean, that type of equipment is going to go away once they're not doing that kind of work anymore. Because we're structuring the, it's a proposal request basically from, we're structuring it with each of the structures as a separate item. So right now, we're just asking them for a quote, basically. And we could say, okay, just do the barn and the other two outbuildings or do all the buildings or whatever. So at this stage, we can get the information. That's a little bit separate from the decision of whether you want to actually have the house torn down at the moment. And we can, we do need to move pretty quickly, so I don't know how much we can wait for that information, bring it to you and then evaluate, you know, other options that we definitely think we should move forward with the barn and the other structures, even if you do decide to do something with the house.
So I guess my question back would be, are we assuming then because they have it onsite that they're going to be able to be at a significant lower price than say someone locally just come in with an excavator and dumpster?
We wouldn't have any mobilization costs because they're already onsite, so that's.
Are we going to entertain other bids then, or how does that work?
The, not at this point, our intent was not to, depending on what we see, come back from them. We can do it under contract. So if we go after the other, I mean, there's additional things, we already have them under contracts. We don't have to go through all of that time and stuff and the bonding, you know. So it'd all be done under the current contract, so we don't have all those additional time and resources that we have to spend to go out and make sure that they have other insurance and other things that are in. So it'd just be, if it's a decent price, you know, and the council's agreeable to it, it would be much cleaner this way and less, require less staff time to do it. Well, I'm just, I'm just putting that out there and I would like to hear from other councils where their heads are at or not.
Just to see what we can get. If it's astronomical and unreasonable, definitely look elsewhere. But if it's not a huge cost, I have no idea what we're talking about, no idea whatsoever. But if it's a probably low cost, I don't know, see, I would see the need to spend time on it. He's already approved $5,000 without our, you know, without coming to us. So I suggest letting get the cost and if we need to, we can talk about it then. I mean, I wouldn't, I would not go to anybody else's demolition, given that we're already right there with dump trucks and excavators, it seems like a dope brainer to me personally, but maybe not.
So we will bring them back. By the next meeting, so we should be able to bring, we'll bring back what the numbers are to you.
I was gonna say, I agree. I won't say the expense, sorry, but no fees can get real expensive with equipment like that. I know that personally for sure.
Yeah, it's just pointed out that it's like, you know, you pay $20,000 or you, you know, put it up and someone takes it away for, you know, whatever, you know, you sell for a dollar, you know. But it might be worth looking into. I do know, and you do too, Kevin, I know that, yeah, to just get it away as it goes, it's probably an abatement for that.
We did, I, one of the questions I asked previously, you know, we didn't get a quote from them, but I can tell you that Pacific Power, because of the power lines that are next to it, that they have to get underneath, that's extremely expensive for anyone that wants to move it if they're going off that direction because of the high voltage lines there.
Yeah, I don't know either of our, but yeah. Well, I just, I just put it out there and yeah, that's the direction, okay. And then, and then that was just my comment that I just wanted to, I think we might not have a man on, but congratulations, Kim, and thank you for going forth the application for the committee and welcome to the events committee.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Anybody have anything else? Okay, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Meeting is adjourned at 7:29 PM, one minute less than an hour as a record for at least the last year or two. Thank you, everybody. Have a good, good time.
Have a good night.
Night, everyone.